One.
I don't know where you got that.
Well, while we get to work, we'll start with what's wait.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your code for which it stands, one nation, and we got indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Order. Public domain. We're talking about that second mark.
Right here.
This.
Yep, right here. This is PC here.
Does he work out in the DC?
No. County.
This, uh, forgive me, I forgot.
Tom Wardstop.
That's actually similar to Tom Wardstop.
The yellow line is the city.
Right, battery, okay.
Battery.
So how far does this land go if it just from where to where?
Well, it goes across out to the, goes across to the end of this road here.
How far to?
I mean, to there, to here.
So it's?
That's a driveway there.
So it's that second mark there?
Right, yeah.
So it would actually actually?
Well, it goes back to here or goes in here.
So it does go up to the city, so?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, this is, this is all the county stuff. Anything in white is county? That wouldn't say?
No, that doesn't make sense.
No, just?
It's just about my weird, what's the white lines?
Right away.
That would be right, so.
So this is the county right away, what it is?
It is county right away.
Right.
It's part of that county road, it was less than all of that. There's more to it than you try out on this road.
Correct.
I don't want to talk too long about this if you don't, so it's a good idea. Yes.
Or if I know it is, so. Would you just?
So the question before us have been?
If you would like to see if the county will sell that, I could put it up there.
But it's its own parcel and it's been surveyed?
That's what I'm asking. I haven't seen anything on it. I don't know how the county acquired it, if it's right away, I don't know that it'd want to sell it. I mean?
Right.
Those types of things, I mean, I'd have to be totally convinced the county has entitled that. Nobody showed me that.
Right, okay.
And where it is and who knows.
Right.
How it would fund that?
Is there a parcel number for this? I mean, is it, is it?
No, right away doesn't have a parcel number anywhere.
It's a county right away as of right now?
Yes, I think Tom said that the road from all of that used to go straight through and they didn't bend it.
Okay, yeah, I see.
So when it was straight through, that's when it was dedicated right away, and then when they changed the road, they just left it in right away.
And it was a late game, hasn't been changed since road around.
If it's right away, it makes all kinds of issues in my opinion.
Yeah.
It really does give a lot of issues because much of the road driveways are nothing more than surface easement, and when they vacate these, it's hard to buy a key to the county. Yeah, that would be most actions, right?
So we would have to turn if you need the right way to change this.
Well, I think it was young man.
Because there would be a process to change the?
I don't know why you want to get rid of the right away, it is, I don't.
Well, we got, we got one guy using it for his own personal use.
Well, that's a different issue than ownership.
So, I mean, if he can use it, everybody ought to be able to use it, is what I'm saying. And that's why I said I'm willing to pay taxes on it, I'll buy it.
I don't think we can stop.
If he puts it up, we'll buy it, whatever.
I don't know that we can even stop right away.
Or maybe not his, whatever.
So then the line would be the one that would know?
Right.
The size of the right way and everything.
Right, I'm not saying it's, it's not a little too big for right away, obviously, but I'm just saying, do we want to get into selling right away? I don't think so, in my opinion.
I mean, it's been set up since, since 1973.
Yes, is that true?
Somebody's using it. Yeah, I mean, if somebody, if somebody, one person can use it, the whole city don't get to use it.
It's not a building, no.
No, not a building.
Looks like there's a?
Hey, sorry.
Is there a trade or something out there, something?
Yeah.
It's like there's a?
There are truck trailers sitting on the mid.
Well, use some more research.
Okay, yeah, but.
But I hear what Michael Pat says, I want to have you sell right away, however, how do you determine if you can use it, as far as I can speak. I have no idea. If they're using it for what it looks like here, I'm assuming that's a bunch of, I don't know. So, yeah, I don't know. I mean, if it is the county right away, I mean, it's just like, you can't let people go along county roads paying the right ways.
Well, usually you have a permit process?
Right.
To do that, but, but, I like people mowing the ditches too, very soon they're mowing, you know, their yard suddenly goes about a half mile down the road.
So what are you going to do?
Yeah, we have to help ourselves.
But the surface easement question is, Vivek and I have done so much research in right away issues that you've got to be looking at surface easement. And you're going to have to look at that and just take it for, for a surface easement. So there's a lot of research that has to be done. First, you have to be sensitive.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You bet.
Jan, what do you think about this, too?
Well, if everybody else is down, I don't think it's going to stay down. Your turn. Okay, alright, if I'm being hurt, and this is going to be an interesting day here today on campus, for several reasons. But before I get started on that, in this area, I want to emphasize to you a little bit, I know a little bit about wind power turbines, okay? And I'm only going to reference it a little bit right now for those that don't know what I have done in the past on this. But I think it needs to be brought out a little bit, I think, at this point in time. Back in two thousand and nine, back in then, those days, you remember? The town of Manhattan, up there at the, there was a program set up for winter schools, program, winter lights for schools. And the only thing that was ever done about it was it was only in western and central Kansas. And at that time, nothing in eastern Kansas, so to make a story as short as I can, I pursued it and went down to southeast corner of Kansas. There's a school down there at that time that was teaching four states about wind for schools, about what it could do for the schools, and the technology for the kids to learn. And so I went down there and I learned all of it in two days, of what they were doing. So I brought the information back with me, and I went because we were concerned about Appenous, which is, that's in Franklin County, it's not Osage. But Appenous and Winsburg and Pomona were all three schools together, and we were worried because we were going to lose our schools. And we didn't do something to gain our activity of having more students at that school. So I brought the information back to the school board. And the process of the information I gave, we had nothing in eastern Kansas, and I thought it would be a good idea. And I tried to do it with the other towns in eastern Kansas, believe it or not. But what finally happened was, at Appenous, they decided to put one in, winter school. Now, and it was back in two thousand and ten was the day it was, it was in March. And I got to tell you, I mean, that's the reason I'm bringing this out. It was a perfect day, and there was not a speck of wind blowing at all. It had been put in, and that was the first one, the Kansas City Power Light, had put in for eastern Kansas. And they had a big enchilada group come in for that day at Appenous, of Power Light people and everybody. And it was a great day for it. But you had to have at least five miles an hour or eight miles an hour to make a turn, and it didn't turn because there was no wind blowing that day. So, anyway, put a short story, short, they put it in, and they showed us how it worked and everything, it was beautiful. But today, two thousand twenty-one, it's, it's there, but it's not functioning. And what happened was, to me, it's concerning, is the district failed to maintain it properly like it should have been done. And that's what hurt that school district, and it's still hurting it today insofar as I'm concerned. But it's still there, but it's not working, and there's debate on whether they're going to do what they're here in the future, but anyway. So I'm anxious to listen to this today that's coming up, because the, there's people that are watching this procedure today that are curious from out here by Reddit, okay, so I'm anxious to see what goes on here today, so with that, that's all I have.
Want a quick ad, four thirty-four, have a little windmill setting up beside their office out there, so they did have a windmill program at one time, I don't know whether they're still there or not. We're getting a minute, spare a minute, I don't want. Uh, it was twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, or again, I have a record session on Monday, I was the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, Baldwin was president. Pat Walsh County Council was also president, public president was Jean Kurt, no public comment. Scott Lloyd's one dog, Jason Hock, I would, met to review the twenty-two budget. Bryce Bailey says county payroll column, that passed in Washington, for COVID case, last Monday. Commissioner Bailey wrote a statement that COVID nineteen case numbers will be available from KAC website. The commissioner also stated the last Monday will not be passed. Commissioner Bailey wrote a statement clarifying use of paper art published in August nineteen, two thousand twenty-one for six county. Roll Chronicle, public comment, Jean Kurt's book on COVID nineteen. That made it an angel cushion, that discussed thirty by thirty plan. Also present for that, Sommers, Bob Strader, and Aaron Dyke. Angel cushion gave a presentation on thirty thirty plan, and the national heritage area, the commissioners will take the information on that. Commissioner Bailey read this in the House of Sixteen, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Motion was made by Bailey saying, but now the credit notes behind sixteen, two thousand twenty-three, as presented with one direction, all voted on, motion here. Then for the two thousand thirteen voter jackal, but ten days are not published. The Fuller, Mesocity, Paulie, Weir, this twenty-seven one, James Heiss, nineteen five, or whatever, against for seventeen, six fifty. Motion was made by Bailey saying, by David to accept the general party, there is options of the one, twenty-seven thousand one dollars, for the two thousand thirteen vote, all voted yes, motion here. Chair, we're about to discuss the length of taxation publication, per behalf of the head over by first name. Tax proposal, sell information, and not tax. Commissar, favor senior senator, general public, can a special letter discuss purchase time long, on getting vehicles, prepared vehicle involved in a deer accident, and request executive session. Motion was made by Bailey saying, but I don't need an executive session, without Walsh County Council, chairman, favor senior senator. Wrong breeds, county clerk, two twenty-seven till ten thirty, seven AM. The status of matter involved in that didn't follow, not like a personal protect, protect the privacy rights of an individual, all voted on, motion here. The commissioners return to the reception at ten thirty, seven AM, no action taken, it's all been executed session. Garrett Northson, Taylor, House List, and service, and that discussed subway service project, also present for Miller, Daniel, Ty Fredericks, and Frank Magger. The commissioners will hold a public hearing on his CDPG grant for subway service around Tuesday, September seventh, two thousand twenty-one, at ten AM. Motion was made by Bailey saying, but I don't need an executive session, without Walsh County Council, from eleven fifteen AM, until eleven thirty, we have to discuss a matter that would be me, purpose, and the term of mine, relationship, all voted on, motion here. The commissioners determine, direct reception, eleven thirty AM, no action taken, as well, in the executive session. Motion was made by Bailey saying, by David, at the August twenty-four, two thousand twenty, tax proposal, propose yourself, allow the county council to fix in case or no beds under property, to be able to take ownership of the property off the tax side, all voted on, motion here. Sandy Bullock acting helped, acting, met to request an executive session, motion was made by Bailey saying, by David, to be in an executive session, with Walsh County Council. Sandy Bullock acting helped, acting, wrong breeds, county clerk, at eleven thirty, seven AM, until eleven forty, seven AM, to discuss a matter of all identified, not after personal protection, and that's an event, all voted on, motion here. The commissioners return to the reception at eleven forty, seven AM, no action taken, as it was all the executive session. Commissioner Bailey made a statement, conservative, asking, and stated, ask, mandated, strictly effective, in OCHM, flexitary, but to discuss hiring, from to administer the ARPA grant. Motion was made by Bailey saying, by David, to request proposals, from firm, to administer the ARPA grant, to be open on September seventh, two thousand twenty-one, all voted on, motion here. Motion was made by Bailey saying, by David, to approve, family medical, request for undisclosed void, all approved, all voted on, motion here. Motion was made by Bailey saying, by David, to approve purchase order number thirty-four twenty, to positive promotion, seeing the amount of seven hundred sixty-five dollars and nine cents, for two bags to be paid for, from county attorney, coercion fund, and purchase order thirty-four nineteen, the positive promotional thing, and the amount of seven hundred sixty-five, nine, for two bags to be paid for from the sheriff's odd, or the general fund, all voted on, motion here. Brett Lewis Communications, having the Chriswell Sheriff, Aaron, Corkman, Vodell, representing him for a follow-up on a radio system. Also present for Bryce, Mike, Gary, Kit, Jeff, Spencer, Glenn Tyson, Kenny, Bushells, Trey Strong, Buddy Rogers, Brandon, Dave Foranbrock, Matthew Becker, Josiah Schultz, Raya Schultz, Chad, how do you call myself, Sham?
Sham.
Sham. Uh, Alan Turner, Julia Redd, Jeff, Albert, John, and Jacoby, Megan, Austin Law, Cameron Murray, Derek Flish, Yonah Robert, and Jeff Johnson, Scott, and Toby Holford, and Justin Fresh, or the commissioner, to confirm this. Leonard Doss, motion was made by David saying, by David, to adjourn, we have a session on August thirty, two thousand twenty-one, all voted on, motion here. I follow, David, I butchered any of the statements. Uh, no, a special were made on August twenty-fifth, the board of county council, not special session, on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, commissioner Bailey, figure present. Commissioner Dyke was present, that Walsh County Council is also present, public president was Jean Kurt. Motion was made by Bailey saying, by David, to be in an executive session, with Walsh County Council, from ten o'clock, ten o'clock, eleven, until ten o'clock, to discuss a matter that would be me, purpose, and the term of my relationship, all voted on, motion here. Motion was made by Bailey saying, by David, to extend the executive session, with Walsh County Council, from ten o'clock, eleven, until ten twenty, to discuss a matter that would be me, purpose, and the term of my relationship, all voted on, motion here. Motion was made by Bailey saying, by David, to accept the resignation of county members effective August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, all voted on, motion here. Motion was made by Bailey saying, by David, to contact with Western Consultants, for administration of the APRA grant, having, one twenty-five per hour, up to one point two five percent of the grant, both voted on, motion here. Down Walsh County Council, claiming the sheriff's, well, the sheriff's office, and his staff for our tax law. Jean Kurt's welcome, go to the K master, to worship, and motion was made by Bailey saying, by David, to adjourn, to adjourn, like a session, on Monday, August thirty, both voted on, motion here. Are there any drawings and provisions? I make a motion, repair, the board, it's August twenty-third, August twenty-second. For those who can't decide?
Aye.
Aye. I thought that's going to take longer to read, so I guess, uh, folks, once. Would you have received a lot of, and now I'm trying to show it to the chief of duty? I don't want to talk to the chief of duty, but, uh. Do you have outside anything? More away?
Do you have a question to clarify?
Sure.
Okay, um, the London Pride is requesting using the White House lawn for October second for their conference.
Who is it?
London Pride.
October, sir. Do we need a motion for that?
Probably.
Yeah.
So, I didn't say the time, or we didn't?
They didn't, they didn't give?
It's a Saturday?
It's a Saturday.
So I make a motion, we're on London Pride, these, for October second, for the conference.
Second.
August, I'm sorry.
Alright.
I have a whole good sentence, motion here. He's kind of.
Do you want to wait until then? That's why I just had it in my sack. Um.
Question since I don't know how many others, yeah.
Sharon, you, it's next time.
I think I read that motion.
Okay, if you want to go on, you can be there until my sack and then come back.
Just do that.
Okay, um, this gentleman, stop by, he's an insurance representative, if you would like to speak with him, I will get him on the internet.
Any specific questions?
Uh, different trucks, but he does all different types of things. Can I do that? Yes, if you let me know, you want to call, we can run the agenda. I have to, I'm on for the voting delegates for the KAC conference. I'm going to make a motion, who, who, I just, the voting delegates. And then again, you want to tell me who wants to register for that conference, I'll take care of it, you can register, or you can register yourself on.
I thought you were going to call them.
I, we have the rules, you care, but we have registered.
I think, what are they saying, is the voting delegates? I have to send them over this process.
This is for the KAC and the meeting, and there's usually one person, and then alternate setup to vote at the conference. To vote the queen of that part of the meeting.
Does that count?
Yes. It could be bylaws for KAC, it could, it's, it's usually, you know, bylaws for KAC, sometimes it could be, they're hiring someone, or just different things, to the organization.
Who's done that before?
Uh, it's usually like the chairman and someone else, or if the chairman's not going to go, another commissioner, or if the commissioners or other commissioners are going, then it's been other, luck officials.
You guys all some of that, that, right?
No, I want to, I, we have the rules, I want to know if you're going, and then I'll sign you out for the meeting.
Okay.
So are you telling me, yes, you're both going?
I don't know. Yeah.
Okay, okay, so I will sign all three of you out.
So what do you need to do with this? Do we need to make a motion, as I was saying?
Yes, it was, well, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be in there, we have a few weeks to get it in, but I just write it down, because I got it in.
Get one over there. Yeah, why?
No, I'm not picking on you, I'm getting deep.
Uh, actually, I think it's what he's on, and then it's, it's, it's really impactful. But firstly, it is for the members of the board, like, for a while, the link was on the board, the KAC board. But I think later on, there's like a KAC meeting where everyone's intent, and just about the delegates vote.
What's the dates on that? Uh, October eighteen, nineteenth, and twentieth. We have some legal stuff about the same time up there.
Yeah.
Which will have a meeting on the morning of the eighteenth, and they got it, and the plan is better than this.
Yeah.
Uh, so if the, whoever is that person, then four thirty to five thirty, on, it's, if all voting delegates are urged, to attend the session. That's my main requirement, and there are legislative policies.
There's pretty good people, but.
I can't hear you, friend. For information.
Yeah.
He talks.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So you want to, you know, this is there, or what, next week? Or what?
We have to decide.
Long as it's here, so it doesn't matter, you, some people's, you're, I can do that, it doesn't matter.
We're all in the general session anyhow, they didn't give you a card to pull them.
Exactly.
So, you know, like school board, you know.
Well, I was just looking at the rest of the schedule, but Monday.
What would you like to do first? We have to go with the, but I'm.
We had to determine who's going to be the voting delegate, and then the after.
Or crush, looks like we got three. You have a first and a second, all of them here, is that what I'm reading? That's it, does, do I go first, or just start off there?
Before we've just done a voting delegate, and then a, like, one other?
There's three, I don't know, I'll get two of all of those.
I guess it's in case people don't show up, they're going to run, press them down.
But whoever, I got the, that person, they're going to know, they're going to call our office, they need to make sure, right? Because I was new, new in forums.
Well, the, usually in the packet, that's why they did this in advance, so like if it's, you know, whoever, in their packet, when they register, it's giving you the information that they need to know. I thought you should have got a little voting card in that packet, but I'm not, I'm not sure, and they can change it from year to year also.
Okay. I'll move the, 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 the.
Why? All those embarrassed, and I.
God.
No.
I lost my mom.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah.
You lost something. Yeah, or, or.
I don't care.
I don't care either.
I'll do it.
Fred was first, all around you, you did your motion.
Yeah.
Second.
All of them, aye?
Aye.
All of those? You wanna say it again?
No.
Second, all three. Any other? You second now?
Yeah, second.
All of them, aye?
Aye.
All of those, second. I'm sorry, Fred, but I can't. Mr. Wells, come on up.
Yes. Maybe that's, I'd like the first one for that. I get an executive session, you're not the first one for that, please.
Um. Twenty minutes? I don't know if I agree, I'm sorry, but, uh, I make a motion that we go in there into executive session for discussion on like the personnel with the sheriff present, for a period of twenty minutes. We go up County Council, I'm sorry. So, we'll say coming back here at nine twenty-one. All those, all those up there, say aye.
Aye.
Washington areas.
My motor driver threw a red code and shut itself off before it left the parking lot.
Is that right?
And this is the second time it's done it, the first time it done it, I told you guys, it's in just a minute here. I don't wanna be out in the middle of a snowbank and just land dead. Will me, uh, okay, fine, well, it did it the second time, so now you get to. Oh, Lord. You know, there's always some things I wanna be mad about at any one time.
I don't get it. And there's a bunch of stuff.
This deal with the wind farm.
Yes.
And that was their salesman.
Yeah.
She had a really nice, good conversation, what have you. Until I pulled out all the little different stuff, the things going on before the, the tower ever goes up. Oh, my.
Yeah, see, there is, and see, I learned all that years, as I mentioned earlier. What, what, see, here's the thing, got me at the time. Reason wind energy schools came to do aware of that was because, uh, another alternative for energy, and also for the education for the kids, so that they can learn the technology to know and to get into that deal of what's going to branch out to be. And that's what that.
The missing part of wind energy is when there's excess wind and you're producing more than the rest of it, you need to have the dang thing producing hydrogen to where you can put hydrogen back to, through a cell and make electricity, wouldn't want to win that one.
Yeah.
Because it's not gonna help.
Correct. And then, and that's the other big part, that, but are these, are these guys today, you wanna tell us about some of this?
No.
They don't, they're not?
No. They're an outfit out of Florida.
Yeah, I knew that, I, I, somebody had told me that, I was late the other day, I heard.
Do you know the history of Old Halt up there by Old Brook and that old big corner, what you have to deal with for putting things in ground up there?
No, I don't.
Neither do they.
Really? So, we got that issue, man.
Okay.
And where they wanna put it? Do you know where they wanna put this?
Oh, I've got, I could put a pie on my place, and it'd be about seventy-five thousand dollars that I could get income from.
How much?
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
A year? Okay, so they're, they're interested in that, you're.
Oh, they're interested in my property.
Are they really? Okay.
But their namesake, their namesake is Swiss whale, it's a Swiss whale development. Now, what most people have, have, have forgotten about the Swiss whale development was it was one of the biggest land frauds in the state and nation, and in the nation at the time that it went in originally.
Okay, so they, are they involved in Redding or Downbrook, or any place like that at all?
But I'm talking about the land grab that they named the thing for, for Swiss whale, Swiss whale wind energy, well, they named it right.
Oh.
And then you go into, then you go into a chapter to where it goes, wait a minute here, once we sign it, they have control of it, and if they don't wanna put, if they don't wanna put one up, they don't have to, they don't have, there's no performance deals and no, willing, no, no program, they take, it's, it's their deal off, so they can tie up the whole thing. And freeze another company out.
Correct. And see, that was part of the rock, so when I learned it in two thousand nine, and yeah, of course, that was when it was cool. There was nothing in their hands, there was nothing, their kids, and how I had nothing to do with anything yet, until they did that day when they put it down on hand in two thousand ten. And it was a great day because there was a big thing in Paris, everybody came to Avenue.
Oh, this saved the planet, it's all kinds of, oh my God, it's wonderful. Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And then the missing information about saving the planet. When you go two plus two equals four, you have to have everything accounted for. The one thing that hasn't been accounted for is solar output. So, one side's saying it's very windy, the other side is saying it's another, neither side is including solar, both are guessing in the dark.
Now, now, how, how tall would these be?
No, I didn't, we really didn't get into.
Didn't get into that?
Didn't get into it. But, uh, getting through to be able to have a foundation hold them up.
Oh, you, they, it's tremendous. You could dig it, well, how far down do you gotta go?
Well, they don't have enough dirt covered to put in a concrete foundation, they've gotta blast through layers of rock. And part of that is a rock that they blast through.
Rebar is that big around? That's one down there, really? Oh, geez, God, and it was all the way around the whole thing, the whole sun up, it's in the ground, excuse my eye.
Yeah, 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 there's, there's, there's all things to that, but see, unless, unless you know the rock that you're gonna go through.
That's right.
And know that it is a fractured ledge, and know that it's not a solid ledge.
Yeah.
You will, and then you will, then you will go broke, and then we are like holding the bank.
That's correct. That's right. Now, would these, would these have elevators in them or not?
Oh, they're supposed to have elevators, but if you're, if you're a volunteer fire department.
Yeah.
And if something goes wrong that elevator, you can't count it.
That's correct. We have a ladder on the inside.
The fact is, only one year old man climbing that ladder is not moving.
Right. And you're going, how tall? They were five, six, I don't think, those are monsters. And I went in, I went, when they got there, man, down there, I went and looked down, and they let me look inside, it was like a dang rocket ship, looked like, you know, my God, it's huge.
Let, let alone if something happens up into the cell, take a volunteer fire department and, or let them, let them hang on for broke, and then do you have to break the ladder along with them?
Yeah, wait a minute, yeah, I love those, son. But see, I can't go, uh, real level, and I get panicky, ended up too high. I couldn't do that type of work.
But the inspection stuff that they do, and the stuff that they have to hang off for.
So, you know how much acreage was they wanting yours?
Well, when there's two hundred plus acres, and they can put one up on a forty-year plot, they can put five of them up.
Okay, and so, what, what, you think they were being generous on what they give you for putting them up?
Well, they, they got a friend out here that, that's, that gives you the deal of what they're, what they're going to pay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not laminated.
They got laminated. And it showed that back, back in two thousand ten when they did it to the school. But, uh, but it was a good education, I brought it back the information, I went to buy six different schools at Eastern Kansas here at the time, because I was trying to promote it, because I wanted to save some of our schools from being closed, because we didn't have enough kids in certain areas and, and our commit accounts. And that was my first ever, but then when we did get it and we used it, you know, it was wonderful, but see, when you get heads of superintendents changed, they have different ideas, and then we had one, we tried to get from Central Kansas to take all those two avenues, and they failed, rather put that person in than the one that took it, destroyed it, and now all of this is sitting there doing nothing, and it's, it, it's a sad situation because really, we, we really wanted to tie a promotion school, get more kids there, and that's why.
The more you know, the more you know about anyone's safety, the more that you can see the shark coming along the way it's all.
Yeah.
And to me, this is, this.
Are they already established in Kansas someplace else?
I think so, there's a whole list of programs, what have you, once I got into that program, uh, uh, once we signed it, it's almost.
Yeah.
Wait a minute here, no.
And what, and would they allow you to have cattle and farm?
They'll allow you to do everything else, but if they don't do anything.
Right.
They still have them, they, they, they still have, they still hold the rights.
Correct.
And even if they go bankrupt and the rest of it, they still hold the rights, and if some of their, but, or the company, which they don't, they don't, they're locked out.
But they don't have the mineral rights, do they?
No, they don't have the mineral rights, but they take the surface.
Okay, I know.
And by taking the surface, infinitum, like you would take mineral rights, like I had in Oklahoma.
Yeah.
They, they're taking the land without, and then you run onto the tax issue, and how what, how, how what, where it's classified as taxes. And with the problem that developers put me into on my own property, how they developed it and did things, it put me in trouble with even the tax people here, and the struggle I had to be able to get that resolved.
So, so, tell me the area they're thinking about, about Old Brook?
The Old Brook.
Right along the highway going up to the.
There, it's a, it's a wide area and through there.
Wide area.
Like seventy-five mile way down to, to Old Brook.
Really? Well, see, I didn't know where they were gonna, what they were looking at, too, I'm down in Lilo now, see, I, they were asking about if I knew all of these people, I said, no, I don't know nothing about them, I said, you know, and, uh, the ones that are at Redding, and all that kind of stuff, I said, I don't know, I said, this is the first time I knew that they were even approaching the commission to come in.
See, the salesman said, uh, yeah, we need to bring you in in a couple of weeks. This was on Friday, when I saw him, okay. Since I'm on the, and since I'm on the list, it gets to the agenda.
Correct.
And there it was, they're being here on Monday, and they told me Friday, we need to get, need to get you in to talk to them in a couple of weeks, and we'll, we'll, we'll pay you.
Okay. How tall would these be? Did they tell you?
They didn't, they didn't tell you.
I didn't, I didn't know. I guess that's the other thing, is how tall they're big and how, and, and their reputation as, uh, working, like, they got some problems at Redding right now, but I learned that there the other day, and they got some contact problems with these, and so I don't know, uh, they're not that tall like, like the ones that way were, and that's why I'm, I'm wondering, what the hell's going on with all these people coming in here doing this? We're getting too many.
Well, see, now, this, this way here, when, when they come in and promise you fifteen thousand dollars a unit. And they'll, they'll promise you so much, so much per acre or years of, um, and you sign a piece of paper.
Yeah, that's it.
They're locked in. They're in, and then nobody else can come in.
Do they, do they give it to you per month or per year or?
Well, it's a, it's a base for them to be, uh, ready, uh, the deal, the payment for the right of way is a one-time payment.
One-time payment.
So, for a one-time payment, they locked in an area for a wind farm. But they could never, that, that if they, if they run into problems, don't have to develop. No, they need to seek some assistance. I tell you, you want the railroad lot, railroad lawyers will go, wait a minute here, wow, I didn't know that they could do that. Boy, did I miss out.
You gotta have a little bit of humor in this, if you're gonna be with this.
I know, but, I know.
So, so now, how many other people is that involved inside here?
From the, from the way that, that, that he was talking, it was essentially my township and more, so I cover seventy-two and a half miles of road.
They're not that big.
They want a, they want a pretty good, well, that's, that's my square deal of al township. So, it's al township and more, so it gets sixty entire township.
For God's sake, Jesus. Come on, man, say. I wanna hear this today, I wanna see how tall these things are, do you, what is your, do you operate?
Leave, leave, leave me enough room, because I'm gonna.
I, I must, yeah, I'll have to tell the end, I wanna, I wanna have a right to ask some questions up in my. Say.
But I'm just a little bit different here on this, is because I've had a good salesman, I have that literature, and I have a needle and deal that you can sign, so I'm just a little bit different than what.
There you go. Well, I'm, I'm, okay, good. I didn't know you, you was involved in this with what you had there when you first came in, see, now, I see.
See, there's, there's a form of lease easement agreement.
Yeah, I got you, all right.
So, I said, now, we, we took it apart, and since I've been through all these other have to take it apart and defend myself because nobody else will.
Yeah.
And I've had a word with T D, given all the other information out there, that this reads a whole lot different to me than it would on a paper. So, this red flag is without going lights, it just, no.
Well, see, here's the thing, can you do everything from inside all the way up, or does it have to be outside, scale, ropes, people and everybody else? Now, where, it's all inside.
There's inspection processes.
Okay.
That you're going to have to go outside and inspect.
Well, yeah, you will.
And it doesn't matter whether everything's inside or not, you will still have to, after so long, have to go out and inspect the lanes and do all that.
Correct, right.
So.
The other interesting thing is, is, you know, my one tour, I went out there, I had a guy came to the town, passing down there, they found out that I had experience from one of us in the schools, and, uh, over here at Avenue, and all that, and he came there and he asked where I was at, so he came over to my place and talked to me, and he wanted me to come out there and look at the one, the one out of Redding, and I said, look, sir, look, I am not going up there, I am not going to go over in that, and I said, and he said, you don't have to, I said, okay, but I said, I gotta have a schematic, I ain't touching nothing unless I have a schematic to look at, and I said, I will not touch it, and I will not go up high, so I went out there with him, he gave me a hundred dollars, I took him out there with him, because the guy was supposed to be done, I went out there and they hit it, where they have panels down below, it's not up there, it's down here, and so, with the wiring, it's got ten different colors of wiring in different lengths of it, all over, it looks like a spaghetti.
Well, they have to have.
And, and, and I said, wait a minute, wait a minute, sir, I gotta have a, I gotta know what colors these wires are before you want me to analyze what's going on with them. But what I did do, I did find out the tracing of it, for the hour I was there, it's a contact problem. This one, it got a contact problem, and it's not making proper contact, and when I disconnected the one deal, it.
One minute?
Then that's what, and he says, I thank you, but he gave me another hundred dollars for coming out there. And I said, well, I don't, I don't mind you, because it interests me. And it's interested me for years, even when I went to school, trying to get to one out of Avenue. Because I was an electronics engineer, so yeah, but now I'm sitting in Kansas City. I worked there for forty some years. And the defense program on missiles and submarines. So I know a lot about electronics, but, but that there is a, that, that is a mess. I saw out there, I said, God, guys, yeah.
You, you got- The weather rain thing is, it's supposed to trip a motor and tip the weather blades and turn the nays to hell. And you got all these other relays that do that. One relay makes that max out.
You, you, I tell you, it's mind boggling. But I couldn't decipher everything in that short of the time. But I, I could see what was going on. It wasn't making contact. And we got it to work, so I figured that was- Oh, yeah, he wants to hire me. And I said, no.
Thank you for answering.
Oh. Karen.
My next question would be to hire Karen E. D. Hunter in Sherwood for a part-time dispatcher. Backed eight twenty-four twenty-one February fifteenth of the night.
Second.
All of the players out.
Hi.
Hi, all friends on.
If I have, no?
Okay.
You guys have a real-
Yeah, on my desk, sure.
Let's get to this one.
Yeah.
So look at this on, on the record, we received some force blogs in the middle. Says two dynamic commissioners. I'm not available to attend the commissioners meeting. But I have a question slash suggesting that two alternatives for a new jail replaced on Allen in November. One for the large nineteen point six one four nine nine zero million dollars. And one for a smaller jail unless our cop citizens voting should be able to vote for a smaller cluster jail without having to choose whether they have a new jail or not. Now the sign is still be at him.
It's a requirement.
I'll go say it's in Kansas. Well, I guess it's up.
Sorry, I was kind of, just a little pronounced word with the sheriff.
Yes, the sheriff and the guy. When it's coming on nine thirty, is that right?
That's right, sir. I'm the resident. Good luck, yeah.
Yes, sir. Also, there's one thing that's not on their agenda today. We're longer than eleven o'clock. We have a, what a turn it by. In secret session with our outside council also, which I'll be back on. Cut it out.
So you, this thing with the, the term on things, not gonna go past eleven o'clock then?
I don't know if it has, it will change a little bit.
Okay, all right.
The sheriff's the most active kind of activity I coordinated into.
Okay.
I can adjust mine down if you give me a fixed time to start. So I don't get, make sure I hit my points, I curl. As long as I know one time, like I, I turn around, look at the clock and keep you on.
Can we go out the other door or can we get that?
Yeah, that's not-
Well, I have my ten, and we'll let them get their stuff out. Public comment or questions on it, maybe we can do yours. I don't know what I have to do. We'll figure it out.
See, I've even got their lease agreement to, to sign for, because I had it written through there, so I'm-
You got an interest agreement that we got right now.
That's why I have here. They told me on Friday. Oh, you sounded like interested in the rest of it. We'll, we'll keep you in touch in a couple of weeks. And then on Friday, I get the notice and the deal email about Thursday afternoon today. So if Monday notice, uh-
Yeah.
Maybe fine glass comes out.
Okay. That'd be interesting.
But we're there. That's what you're gonna have.
Yeah, that would probably worse. I see this is your only resolution to drop. So we're gonna make it, uh, twenty-one dash one. Is that okay?
I agree. Okay. Is there a thing you need for the last page on that?
Yes.
Okay.
You'd think if they're coming down here, they would tell someone just hand it out on you and the files.
Yeah, it's a little bit deeper than out Redding, though, is that there?
It's a positive for a board. You're right. I had, I had a little rocky dirt I did on these coast, and I had a little rocky dirt in the fall, too. So you have a portal.
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning.
Are you glad to be down on all your chickens still?
Oh, I don't know. I like doing that. Always have. Yeah, oh yeah.
Why isn't always like a hundred degrees when we get to that?
Well, that's when you really want it to be. That's when it does the best job.
Really?
Yep. The oil adheres, adheres to the rock. And yeah, especially if you can get some warm temperatures after you get that. Yeah, that's why you never want to get it at the end of September because you don't have enough warm weather to make it bolling. Now, I, I enjoy doing that.
I wonder if you do.
Okay. Uh, I'll pass these out. This is kind of an updated map we took flat on the bridge boll project. That we've got. I know you have another one that's got some other ones on there, but this is just more easier to find and review and look at. There is a couple of things that's kind of come up since I was in here. I got a, as you know, we made a request for a project for next year's off-system bridge program. I did hear in two of the bridges that we submitted was one forty-six and one thirty-nine. If you look off middle of the map, off to the right. They did ask us which one we prefer to have done. So maybe we've got a chance. I'm not saying we're going to get something. But they did ask which one we would prefer of the two. I chose one forty-six in the fact that we already have plans started on that. It's not final field check plans, but there has been plans. There probably have to be some guard rail tweaking done on the plans, whatnot. But in another sense, you're looking at a nine hundred and some odd thousand dollar project at one forty-six versus six or seven hundred thousand on one thirty-nine. So if you get eighty percent-
Right.
-of that, it kind of makes a lot more sense to try for the larger amount one. So I, I indicated we wanted, was interested in the one forty-six project. So, but we still haven't heard back for certain on that, if that, if we got anything. I don't, and they haven't actually notified anybody yet. So I think they're still in the thinking mode. But that's kind of a list of all of them.
Right beside Blacktop. It's a little bridge, but it's-
What's that now?
Yeah, one hundred twenty-fifth.
Oh, yeah.
That's that little bridge that's going up to the hill.
What point is the one just outside the border?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the one right outside of the Switzer Creek, right there by the school.
Yeah.
And one ninety is one right there, and then you got the two culverts.
Yeah, one ninety is a deck. Three ninety, of course, is out here. East of Linden here at the T intersection on Beriton. And then the culverts will be, end up at bridges, just because they'll be upsized to where they'll be size enough to be classified as bridges. But right now, they don't have a number name or number tickler. Kind of still while we're on bridges, October the eighth, we have to have a bridge submitted for the local bridge improvement program, which that's the program, we get a hundred and fifty thousand for bridge replacements. And that is the same as the bridge that we're doing up on Beriton out east of, between one hundred thirty-third and one hundred thirty-seven. That is that same, same program. So what I'm looking at there is on one forty-one, which, yeah, I don't have that on here, but that's on, that's the one that I've always said belongs to the railroad and not the county. But I, we are checking out the right of way on that. And I say, we took flat and strobe of surveying it out to make sure whether it is indeed an hour right of way or the Burlington Northern Santa Fe's right of way. Because they have that one classified as a fracture critical bridge. And that's another one that we can get off of our list if indeed it turns out to be ours. We also have contact person, once we get this right of way, determined to meet with Burlington Northern on that particular bridge. And so we've got a meeting time, try to get set up with that. But that is one of them that I kind of like to see if we have to do it, just to get rid of another. We'd have another one or two that we could do to still get rid of smaller fracture critical ones also. But presumably, kind of have these fracture criticals down, a couple of big ones anyhow. But we have to have that submitted in October the eighth in order to be in contention anyhow for project. But September the thirteenth, we will have the opening on that bridge that I was just talking about up on Beriton. That will be in here, of course, but that's, that's kind of falls under all our projects. Now, the one up on Hope, that is still set for October letting. I think it's October twenty-first. Don't hold me that date, but KDOT's handling all that. We don't, we don't have any control of that. They'll, they'll do that letting and everything up there. We won't even know anything about it until they approve or, or of the contractor. But that's kind of it on bridges for right now anyhow. As I was just saying earlier, we do have our chip and seal completed. We are going to be working on asphalt next week. I just got word of that from the contractor. He indicated again this morning that that is still a go for, to finish the asphalt work up. The following week, we have the shoulder machine on rent to put the rock along the edge of the new asphalt we've done. That's scheduled for, well, we're supposed to get it seventeenth, probably start work on that on the twentieth.
Is the twentieth still behind the council meeting? And it's a no, right?
Yeah. Yep.
So you're on?
Uh, no, the, the meal, which will be provided by the vendors, is at six thirty. Seven fifteen is the actual time of the meeting. That's when the, the meeting will officially take, open up.
I don't know if I asked this enough. We have to have that as a meeting.
We usually do a special meeting.
So I have a special meeting.
And so you just adjourn after you're done, and you start your other business.
So have we, we can talk or discuss that. Yes.
This is to say a thank you for continuing the shoulder machine work. It really made a huge difference in the safety of that road north of Golden Grove. Thank you.
We've tried to got caught up on it, Jim, when we were, so we're probably about two years actually getting caught up. But now we're to the point of anything that we do, we put to do the shoulder machine that year now.
You, you, you made a difference for seconds.
It still settles down some, but it's not-
Better than it was.
It's an inch or inch and a half drop off instead of maybe three or four spaces. Yeah. But, uh, yeah, the township thing, we've got a couple of booklets also available that will pass out, probably one booklet township, and that's from the LTAP. And that will be provided at the meeting or when they check in that evening. Again, Keith Browning with KAC will be the main speaker. And I don't know, I don't see a need. Do you need any time for anything on that, on the agenda? I mean, I have had, you know, if you've got anything pressing or coming up or anything like that, but I usually allow. But if you don't have, I probably won't even have you on the agenda or anything. And I don't know whether Lexi has anything. And I don't know whether Lexi has anything. Do you know of anything that she might have that would be in her, to the townships or anything?
I haven't heard.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll find out.
But she's on vacation right now, so.
Okay, yeah, I probably won't do anything on the agenda until probably the week before anyhow. So uh, I have had in the past even the uh, Knox's weed, if they've got anything going on. And I don't know whether they're really happening out there, anything right now. Of course, this being kind of in the fall instead of the spring, my, he'd be, all his stuff would be winding down anyhow. Yeah, still uh, unfortunate thing. The new hire that we had, we just got him here, we got him going. And then his wife had come down with a COVID, so that's kind of been an unfortunate timing on that. I still need to try to find some more help, period. I mean, the Blake guy up your way is now filling in for, you know, to landfill because of that operator being gone.
Right.
You know, on leave and so, yeah, we're, we're not getting anything plated.
Right.
And I'm going to have to pull the other two off to probably come over and help Blake some. Of course, it's dry.
And it's too dry, yes.
It's dry right now anyhow, but again, I, I know he hasn't been on his blade for about three weeks now. Really, so. Yeah, right, okay.
Would work.
Well, I wish, I wish they kind of want to get, somebody get back to work anyhow.
Just they loop up through Iowa and Nebraska. And I saw thousands of velvone signs, anywhere from eleven to twenty-five dollars an hour and stuff, you know.
Well, I know what.
It's been on what they were, but you know, thousands of them.
Like the other day, we actually had Christine out running a pilot car because we didn't have enough help. She was running it on the chip and seal when we was.
But you need a pilot car too.
Yeah. Well, that was it, Lisa was still in the office, so.
Well, I know.
Still kept it open, but. Uh, yeah, on our little deal with the uh, that uh, up there on Prairie Center, uh, yeah, we, we lost on the theft deal. We lost three batteries. Uh, and then uh, they cut a bunch of artists, which was the worst thing on that chipper. And uh, cutting cables, battery cables, of course, rather than trying to get the hose loose, well, they just cut the cables. And probably two hundred gallon of diesel fuel. Cause they got diesel fuel and we'd had that filled up. Let's see, Thursday, Thursday evening, no.
Yeah.
Thursday evening, I think it was.
When I'm in Fresno.
Yeah. Actually, it was on his, no, it was, it was at the chip pile, which yeah, that's his only.
Well, I see the termite been working on the chip pile too.
But uh.
Somebody scooping it out was terrible.
We lost diesel fuel out of the broom, the high loader, the chipper and one rover.
And cut the wire and computer wire.
Yeah, so the computer wire from the uh, that feeds into all the, well, it all hooks into the battery and that's why they cut it is because they tried to get the battery. Yeah. We, we uh, well, we looked on up further, Jay, and found a uh, a uh, tape that had it written on further on up inside behind some tin work and found which one that all tied into, so. But anyhow, we had.
The person who sold the diesel fuel to set up this field, they, they had electric pump.
They had electric pump.
To come out and steal it.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if we couldn't set up some portable game cameras and put them in birdhouses to where the desert footlights are under surveillance? And some some wheel things like that to, to help us with thieving?
Well, we've tried that on signs and it doesn't work. Uh, we, we've tried it, uh, I don't know whether we just wasn't smart enough to get it right or what. But uh, we haven't had any luck yet anyhow. But yeah, we've got some Jim, and try.
The Rock quarry people found out on their cameras that they put up some of the people that went around those racks, the people that worked and do where the cameras were.
But I, I understand there was another theft in that area over the weekend. I don't know whether that's associated or not, but makes you kind of wonder.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, I don't know, I don't know if I have too much more. Did you have a question?
I did, so up in this crack area, do you have SMA telephone?
Uh huh.
They contracted and they're putting, they're putting in high rock cable maybe, but.
Yeah.
They're trenching down almost the middle of the road or maybe like the crack inside of the road. So I've had some residents contacting that are kind of upset because their roads is inverted kind of bad. And now that they don't let trenching go through the works. And then Michael Lawler, they haven't kind of come out and looked just to see what they can do. But my question is, when the utility company is doing that, do they have to? Is there any money given towards repairing roads, more gravel, anything like that? Or that's just all township expense or what's, how does, are there any agreements in advance?
That's a uh, deal that the legislators put in many years ago that pretty much kind of gives the utilities the right to do kind of whatever they don't want to.
So they don't, there's no regulations in the county that require that?
Yeah, they have to have a permit. They have to have a permit from the owner of the road or whoever's in charge of the road. Oh, they a lot of times will put it right at the very edge of the road.
Right.
And sometimes that is not the worst place to be because of ditch. And Jim contested that, you'll get into the ditch, you clean the ditch out and there's your phone line. Chances are in the edge of the road, as long as it's out on the wheel tracks, is, is undisturbed. Usually you very seldom ever get into that area unless you're putting in a culvert or something like that.
So there's no repair to the roads that's required by the utility company? They don't have to recreate it, they don't have to grow it, do anything? They just tear it up, huh?
Usually they never do.
Well, that wasn't my question. My question is, are there any regulations countywide that they're required to repair the road?
Unless you can get that before you sign an agreement, the uh, yeah, they, you, they chase, they say that they will fix it back up. Chances are it never is.
So there isn't any, there's no contract signed in advance? These companies just come in and do what they want?
Well, again, they, they are supposed to have a permit signed by the owner of the roadway or the main.
Well, wouldn't that, I thought on the township.
So in the township.
In the township or the, so they have to sign with the township or they sign?
They, they've signed with the township.
Right.
So they should know that, so what if they didn't go do that?
And, and a lot of times we get that call first and we usually defer them out to the township.
So are they required to do that?
Yes, I, they're, they're supposed to have permits, but whether they're.
By a lot of townships won't sign a permit because then if you hit the table, you're, you're liable because.
The simple, the simple statement that you get from the township is this, you put anything in all right or you do so at your own risk. And that, that kind of takes care of, uh, if somebody puts it into this deal and cut it.
We're out of the line of fire. Years ago, when they trashed across township road, they might give us some graphics.
Yeah.
That was about it.
What happens if they have came in and they've done all this work and they never approached the township with the contract? What if they just?
Well, they.
They'll send it to you.
The township, the township could go back on them if they haven't gotten a permit signed.
Right.
To where they know where it's going to go and how it's going to go. Because that's, when you do that, sign that permit, that's when you can dictate where you'd rather see the table be placed at. Because they usually will ask you, would you prefer it to be here or would you prefer it in a ditch? Or would you prefer it on the back slope next to the right of way fence? And that's when you can dictate that.
Right.
Cause cartons in Ridgeway Park's fairbanks, are there any fairbanks?
Yeah.
I think so, I'll ask, I'll ask about that.
A lot of them now they wore under the road, so they didn't use to.
Yeah.
The, this particular one, they're pretty much going down the, where the rain tide would be.
Yeah, right on the edge of the shoulder, that's, that's it.
They're, they're a little bit to the right of center.
Okay.
If they compact it right, it will, it will be all right, but you'd have to spend the time to compact it.
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of my question is, is the cost of repairs to the township and if that's.
The, the trick to a lot of that is the company policy itself, the home company and how that the contractor has to work. So the contractor has an obligation to the home company, what they're supposed to do and how it's supposed to do.
It sounds like the township didn't have anything to work on that.
That, they had me come out and look at it and I'm going to ask more questions, but as he's talking, I'm like, well.
Township or not, yeah.
It's a township, they never said anything about how they would discuss this in advance. So I guess I can ask that question, but.
Usually you folks would even be a signer.
Yeah, we'll, we'll sign a law.
That's my idea.
Yep. Yep, whenever I bring in one of those papers, that's what that is, is that.
Is it a grievance that's sometimes blowing over the wall, sorry?
Usually it's a vibrated file, it's not too big of a deal, but.
Usually you just get it huffed up and if they, like Jim says, if they get it compacted back down, you very seldom even ever notice it. But if they're out in a right wheel track of the, of the driving surface, well, they're too far out.
Well, not that, but this road really didn't have much gravel on it, so it looks just like just a bunch of dirt. So as soon as it starts raining, it's.
Yeah.
And I, I thought I would ask, they were asking me some questions and I wasn't sure. The only thing I have is, did Frank Mager, when he was through doing things, sail away, had some questions that he was.
Yeah.
Wanted to know, did he get hold of you and were you able to answer those for him?
He uh, had sent me an email and I was going to, did, as I got on email, has the county uh, hired this one company to check on this or?
So there's a company, I think it's called Midwest, um, Midwest company. They are assisting in helping apply for this USDA loan.
But that's nothing. We haven't, we haven't hired anybody though.
No, this company I think is going to do it without a fee.
I don't know, it's, no, that's not true of the county, this is the homeowners.
The way that, the way that, the way that Eric explained it is that this company is Midwest, I can't remember, Midwest assistance, they will do some of the labor of applying for this loan. And I think that it's no cost to sail away to do that. So there's, there's a gentleman, his first name is Kerry, I think.
Yeah, Kerry.
He's going to be assisting them and so I guess there's some information he's needing to help them work through this loan.
Paid from Rural Assistance Services.
Right.
Okay.
So he's going to be the one that is going to be helping them if they proceed with this USDA.
Okay.
They have the questions that are being asked before we are moving forward. They've got their hearing, but they have way up before the CPG grant part of it because the homeowners association had questions they want answered.
Okay.
So I'm assuming on some camera set, guys, I came over last night and I showed her that it was talking about systems. We'll be here, what's his name? The engineer who was.
Oh, Ben Kramer.
Yeah, so he'll be here on the setup.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think that was the date.
I was going to ask one of those.
And the seven, the last is going to be here.
Okay.
Ten AM on the seven.
Okay, I'll double check that with Mr. Kramer, but, okay. Well, I don't think I have anything else. Okay, if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind sitting in on this next.
Yeah, yeah. That mean I see you speaking, Dr.?
Yes, I did.
You gave us?
No, I'm sneaking in for this next meeting. I'm bummed, I think a couple of days.
One of us. I'm assuming you guys are with Nexter Energy Resources?
Yes.
You're all good.
Thank you.
We will turn to some of you.
All right, good morning. So my name's Fiona Bagwell, I'm a developer with Nexter Energy Resources.
And I'm Alan Anderson, I'm actually with Impulsion Valley Law Firm in our Kansas City office, but I live in Lawrence, so this is actually closer, it's closer to me to get here than it does for me to get to the office. So it's kind of a nice deal for me.
So I have a few handouts, but we just wanted to introduce ourselves and talk about a potential project opportunity in Sage County. Okay, perfect. I have one extra. So a little background on myself, I have been with Nexter Energy for the past four years. My background is mechanical engineering, so I started working with a company in wind engineering and operations and maintaining the equipment and components in a wind turbine. And this year I joined the development side, so I'm new to our development business. But Nexter is the largest producer of wind and solar in the country. We're an American owned and operated company and we have nine operating wind projects in Kansas. So what brought us to O Sage County is the transmission capacity, um, similar to a road network. The transmission network, once it is at capacity, it's expensive to upgrade, like adding a highway to, I'm sorry, adding a lane to a highway. Uh, we're looking at doing an, oh, I'm sorry, a wind project and a solar project in O Sage County, but we're at the very early stages at this point. So uh, projects of this size take four to six years to develop. Um, so this is the very early beginnings of that, uh, we're just starting land acquisition. So we're looking for voluntary landowners to put wind turbines or solar panels on that, on their property. And they'll enter a lease agreement with us to be financially compensated for solar panels, wind. Um, that process may take a year or two depending on the interest. Then we would enter permitting, zoning, um, you know, we'll follow any legal requirements from a federal, state and local level. So that's one thing we wanted to ask you guys for is your latest, uh, any wind and solar regulations that you have. Um, so we would go to permitting and then, you know, four, five years construction or a year before uh, the, the wind or solar site is operational. Um, we're looking at about two hundred megawatts, so for, for each project. For wind, it's a larger footprint, it's about thirty acres per megawatt. But the wind turbine only takes up an acre or two on the property, we just have to space them out. Solar is much smaller, it's about six to seven acres per megawatt, but the panels cover the entire property. So from a landowner perspective, that's something to consider, you know, for each landowner, whether they want to, with wind, they can continue farming the rest of their property, with solar, you know, it's covering. um, with wind, they can continue farming the rest of their property, with solar, you know, it's covering any area that they're willing to lease.
Did you say it's 200 megawatts per project?
Correct. Roughly.
And wind, it takes up 30 acres, right?
The footprint, so when we're looking at, you know, acquiring or getting site control for a project, that's how large our, our area of interest is. But then we'll put our wind turbine array at optimal locations within that boundary. So that, depending on the technology, um, when we're looking years out, we're looking at bigger blades and less turbines in that footprint. I would guess, uh, 80 or so.
Or 80?
We can't quote, no, in the total project. Um, that number is still early to be determined, so.
And does the landowner know their solar panels?
Yes, yes, so they would say, you know, I'm willing to do either, they would enter an agreement to both, or one or the other.
So obviously you've contacted some people already.
We just started, yes.
What area are you typically looking at on the county?
Yep, so right now, I would say the northeast quadrant of the county.
Okay.
Um, we know you have another wind project.
Northwest county.
Yep.
Right.
So, you know, that area is taken up, and based on the resource, um, the topography of the land, you know, looking at the agricultural land, and wind and solar resource, the northeast quadrant of the county is where we're interested in.
Are you looking in other counties as well, adjoining counties?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So this would be one component of a multi-county thing, or?
Uh, no, this project, so we're looking in many counties in Kansas, but this project would be entirely in Osage County.
Okay.
Both, both the wind and solar would be only in Osage County.
I would, you just need to run the area.
So, right now, we don't have anything more specific than the northeast quadrant, because it is so early. As we get interest and our, our boundary starts to develop, I can give you more updates on, hey, you know, this is more of the shape of what we're expecting, but right now, that's just an area, I guess.
But for both of the projects, and for it to be viable, how much acreage current you need, you need contract?
Yep, so we would need a ratio of, you know, 30 acres times 200 megawatts, so 6,000 acres. But then, like I said, within that footprint, you put, a turbine would only take up an acre of those properties within it, so it shrinks.
So you're looking for 160 acre plots right now, tend to these groups like that, to see if you can get enough total acres-
Exactly.
So that you can get a tower in and get all of your set facts.
Exactly, so we'll approach landowners with, um, our offer, we'll enter negotiations into that contract, and assess, you know, at first we have the option period, so we're paying them, you know-
Right.
A set fee to evaluate this opportunity. We may sign everyone up and then run into some environmental challenges that lead us to not be able to develop a project. We hope that's not the case, we hope that we can, you know, make this project happen, but, um, yeah, the footprint of who is interested will help shape that boundary. We'd like, you know, the, the land to be connected, or the landowners that do participate. There are cases where we can do underground collection, um, across neighbors' property, if they're willing to let us do that, to connect, uh, the participating landowners.
How long is the lease on these?
So, the lease, that's a good question, um, I might have to get you back, get back to you on that number. They're usually between 25 to 35 years.
How long does the 25 to 40 to 40 hours?
They are designed to last the entire length of the project.
So 25 to 35 years?
Yes, there may be a case, and I'm just writing down, I'm going to get you the exact term of the, these agreements. Wind and, wind and solar are a little different, wind might be 40 to 50 years, sorry to miss quote, and then the solar would be the 25 to 35.
Sure, at the end, we got a lot of time, most of the decommissioning process.
Yep, so we commit to a decommissioning plan, and most counties, I'd like to see what, you know, your regulations are exactly, but our standard is to, um, deliver a de, a decommissioning plan that explains, you know, we'll do a cost assessment, how much that's going to cost us, um, we try to recycle as many of the components as possible, the fiberglass blades, um, some of the materials in the panels are salvageable and have value, and we're going to restore the land to exactly as it was prior. Um, any roads that need to be, um, need to be maintained or increased, um, the capability of the roads for construction purposes, um, we'll have a road use plan, um, with any of your local engineers, planning and zoning, um, am I forgetting anything on that note?
Yeah, what, what we plan to do on that is likely have a security in place, so the, so the county's comfortable that if, it's never happened, but if for some reason the company goes away, there's a security that you could draw upon to hire someone to come in and do the reclamation if needed.
Right.
Yeah, the good news in Kansas, you know, we have, there's now 40 plus, I know the number keeps moving, because we're more going into operation, call it 42, 43 projects, um, and I've worked on most of those, we've got good plans we can kind of put in place. So the county is fully comfortable and geared on all these different things, from road use to decommissioning.
Yeah.
So that, you know, they, they go well, because there's good reasons why these projects, you know, should, and you, you all have some experience, but then also to make sure your constituents know there's something there, should the worst-case scenarios happen.
So if I can walk out, and some of the regulations we have, I'll listen to them.
Well, we've had the one, um, wind farm down in the southeast part of the county, south-west part of the county. And we pretty much went by Lime County, because Lime County absorbed most of that one, so we just kind of piggybacked on to their regulations. And with that, um, and as far as solar, we've only got one solar farm in the county, which was Osage City, north of Osage there. So, but there's, um, there is some regulations on that, but that's funny, because we, Russ is bringing some regulations to our next meeting, for us to discuss, because we've been preparing for this.
So in the packets, because you already have a wind, um, a wind facility, I just shared kind of our company energy packets, and then a solar info, as well as my card. Um, just wanted to reiterate that this is very early stage, we're just starting to look at this opportunity. If you have any questions, reach out to me anytime, and we plan to, as this progresses, check in and give you more updates. Any other questions?
You want to hear about one of the projects?
Yeah, I do. How tall are these?
How tall?
Yep.
So the technology is, um, is changing, but I would say 400?
They're usually, so some, some in Kansas are 400, some are 500, somewhere, somewhere between four and six would be the answer.
Yeah.
Because we're looking at far enough, and then, you know, from here, that there could be somewhere in that range.
Maybe up to, yeah, five or six.
Are you aware of ones down at where you're living?
I think that's an EDP project.
Yeah, they're tall, they're big.
Yeah, I think those are probably-
Are you guys all lawyers now, or not?
No.
No.
No? Okay.
So we have, um, once the project goes operational, we'll have probably five or six wind technicians that staff the project. There is, um, a climbing ladder that they'll hook onto, they can climb, you know, to maintenance the equipment.
Okay.
Grease, check some electrical wiring, make sure that it's running efficiently.
And one other question, are you sure, you'd rather look at the area of the ground in that area that you're looking?
So, we don't mean to say that everything is perfect ground, there'll be some, you know, water exclusions, um, trees, certain buildable exclusions that we evaluate on, you know, each property, of where exactly within that property we can build. But relative to neighboring counties, it's very good topography for-
So.
Yeah, one thing, from, I mean, describe this as an early stage, so there are many stages, including all the different kinds of studies that will go on, including geotechnical studies of, you know, kind of tests, that's a good point, it will need to be part of the process as they get closer. The first part is seeing is, you know, is there, is it a community that wants to, if people sign up? People don't want to sign up, they, you know, like, it's all voluntary, so what first issue is, you know, is the resource there, sort of transmission, do the people want to sign up? So if we get through that, and of course, does the county want it, um, then, then it can narrow us further in and all those things, so it's, it's a fair point.
Right, so during the option period, there would be those onsite surveys.
So if these sites are going four to 600 feet here, how far do we go in the ground?
Yep, so-
We've got mechanical engineers.
There would be, so there would be about a 30 to 50 feet base. I think they go 20 to 30 feet deep, and they build that concrete foundation, and then it's covered by, um, the soil and grass or crop right up to the tower.
They build a upside-down cupcake.
And rebar, sorry.
That pans out.
Yeah, I can get you some more diagrams on that, I'm not a civil engineer, but-
Yeah.
Yeah, it gets, it's interesting. Yeah, the engineering that goes into that is amazing, and tech-
It's not tall, or? No, they go, they-
They do the rebar structure, yeah.
Upside, inverted cone file.
Yeah.
And, so it's still a lot of concrete rebar down in the ground a lot.
But then, once it's resurfaced, you know, it's only five feet out are crops, so you can go really close to it.
Yeah, that concrete gets tested by more engineers than you could imagine.
So when you say you put these back, so like, where do you take that out of the ground when you're done?
So I think we'll go up to a certain depth below.
So how all of that come back out of it?
Depending on your requirement, but I think standard is correct, we wouldn't pull all of that back out.
And the landowner, so it's up again, on lease, so there'll, that'll be a discussion with them as well, but it usually, it goes below where it'd be, you know, it may, it could continue to be maintained as agriculture, so if it's 36, there's something kind of low plowed out type of concepts.
On the solar part, uh, how many panels does the project looking at?
Um, so I don't have a quick map panels, but, um, the, the acreage that I mentioned, six to seven acres per megawatt, you have rows of panels, um, arrays that make up panels, and then you have an inverter box, um, grouping several panel arrays. Depending on the technology, you can have fixed panels, you can have tracking that move with the sun, or, or even seeing bifacial's that are stationary, but they capture, um, ambient light on the bottom of the panels. So depending on which technology we go with, they'll be spaced, each row will be spaced accordingly, um, as we get farther along. I can give you better update on that.
I know you're ready.
Yeah.
Yeah.
After he said that some, which I think he called her, was the, my office, and already, you guys have a lot of mystery, a little bit.
Yeah.
It's true.
Okay, there you stay right there, so there are going to be answers to these questions too.
Okay.
Because, because I've been with Stephen Cunningham, I think you probably should know, should have known him.
Okay.
Okay. Here is the wind farm lease deal that you sent, that, that, we could have signed that back.
Well, you couldn't, because it doesn't have your name in it, but it's a, it's a standard agreement that we would-
Okay, so that's standard agreement. I've got everything kind of marked up in through here, I didn't want to kill 20 something on trees, and if you'd like to look through this, I'll gradually load it to you. Page 10, paragraph 11, and I think it's point two. Once I sign that, I'm out of the picture forever as a landowner, and only you can decide what's going on in Bonita. So there is no date of termination, there's no date of the rest of it. If you guys hold, we still don't get the land back, it is a bad situation, and it is a bad deal. And that immediately put me into remembering why Swiss Veil isn't named very many places, because it was the biggest land swinged on in the 1800s. And here we go with that, where you're swinging me out of the availability to be able to bring somebody else in. Your man that come out to do this doesn't understand the rock up there in North Osage County, and how to get through all that and what have you, and the costs involved. I've been digging in that ground for a long time, I've worked utilities in a lot of places, and most people that come out there do not understand the headache that they have to get to the rock. Now, the Swiss Veil, uh, power station is wherever she's going to lock into, and to get to there, you're going to have to dig through a lot of rock. Now, the best thing is, that I heard was, is the transmission cables are supposed to be 10 feet apart. Good, we made the mistake in Virginia of pulling one transmission cable into the other, and it was in ground and saved, and it shut down the gardens and the brewery and all kinds of stuff. So there is some positive things going on, but there is so much there that, that nobody knows about, that your guy that came out doesn't know the topography, doesn't know the rock, doesn't know everything, and that, uh, no way in the world would I ever sign an agreement like that.
So, one thing to point out is it is voluntary, we have no right to force you to enter into that agreement.
I realize it's a voluntary program, but-
Number two, it does have a term line, so the term of the agreement-
I didn't find a term line, didn't written down in any part of that on any kind of a term.
I can show you.
I can stand corrected here, if you can pull that thing up.
Yes.
There, we went into back-rush, he went through all kinds of different things, and once we signed it, it was to do.
So there is a set term, um, I'll point it out to you when we get it back. Number three is our land agents, so we are a huge company with very specialized departments. We have our land team that is very, um, very skilled on this side of things, land acquisition, what rights you have as a property owner, what the contract entails, but they are not our engineers that are doing the construction and evaluation.
One of the things that make this profitable or non-profitable is whether you got what you've got in the ground.
Sure.
Yeah.
Because you've got legends of rock in, in that part of the area, that have compounded every, every utility operator that's been there since about 1964, in fact, most of them with back-rush, because they misjudged what rock was there. So I speak from a long line of experience, I speak from even quarrying, having rock quarries in those areas, but I also speak from, I go rock and dirt 10 states on two other continents. So I've got a spectrum of knowledge that, uh, most don't have. For your salesman to come out and not have a clue with the rest of it, they, why, need to talk to the engineer, I need to talk to the rest of it.
Right.
It could make whether that thing is profitable or not, but once I've signed that agreement, it's yours.
Well, so it's, again, it, it is the freedom of contract, it's totally voluntary, whether you want to participate in a potential project or not. And it sounds like, you know, if you're not interested, you don't think it could go forward, that's a choice you and everyone else gets to make. Uh, there is someone, uh, when you sign up with Nexter or a different developer, you'd say, I think it's worth it for me, and I think you can get to the finish line, and this could become a project. Nexter's done more projects in the, more than anyone in the world, doesn't mean it's not going to be, it couldn't fail, they'll not move forward, they won't move forward, they've got the best engineers, they'll look at that, and if they say, gosh, that's, that is just different, it won't go forward. They've thought about it enough to say it's worth putting this kind of money into it to move forward, but it, but again, the whole thing is voluntary. If, if, in fact, recommend you have a lawyer look at it, and you say, okay, tell me what, what I, what I need to know about this, because there is a term in there. Uh, because you can't have a contract that goes on forever, that, that wouldn't be allowed, and it, it is not adhered. So then, then you decide, you know, maybe there's things you want to talk about, because they have nine projects in the state with exceptionally happy landowners. It's a good thing with Nexter, you can say, how did it go in the counties that worked it? Great, and you can talk to the county commissioners, you're talking to them, how'd it go with their landowners? Great, so-
Oh, I can see how this could be a great thing, and I'm sitting here going at $15,000 a turbine, let's see, I can put five on them up here, that's about $70,000 a year, boy, sign me up. But, that agreement will make the railroad lawyer, lawyer look like, what did I miss, and why did I miss it? And these people know how much I have done in railroad law, and how complicated railroad law is. This, and the way that, the way that I read it and the way that I've done it, no. This, to, to send your man out this early, to this dress, to sign these people up before you've done anything else, it's- To me, I'm almost recommending a cease and desist, because there is differences in what your salesman said was the land that they needed, there's differences in what did he representative, there's differences in. And until those differences and things start to gel, there shouldn't be a halt on this.
But what I, again, it's, this is the Kansas we have, and there's been great, you know, judges and professors have talked about this, the freedom of contract, it sounds like you're not ready, I wouldn't sign up then. And, but as to-
I'm ready to sign, I'm ready- I'm ready to sign, I'm ready to sign, but I'm not ready to.
Well, that's, I mean, you're not ready to sign this. So I think that, that's, again, that's the freedom of contract, where you or your lawyer have those discussions.
We've been through, we've been through, we've been through all these other different things. It's important for environmental concern, everything else. Boy, I'd be willing to sign, but not on that line.
Understood, and there, that's where I think if your, your attorney goes back and says, here's the things I want changed, it may work for the company, it may not. But that's the, that's the freedom of contract, that private negotiation, we give it in capitalist system. We either, you decide this is one I want to work with, or one that I don't, but.
But there is so much hidden in this.
Well, what I'd say is, we've done, again, forty-plus projects in Kansas, this has been looked at.
Those projects doesn't necessarily mean what's hidden in the contract.
So one thing I just want to point out is the option period, which is our period of no construction, but analysis, surveying. This is thirty-six months, so three years. There's one option to extend that if we need more time to do analysis for another three years. Then we have the lease term, where there's a different payment structure. And the total lease term, or the initial lease term is fifty years.
Okay.
And then it has an option to extend for twenty years.
Turn that on over to page ten, paragraph eleven. Read the one that I've marked.
This one right here?
The one right there.
All right. No required installation or operation. This is under, just want to say, the section of use operation that may be. Nothing in this agreement shall be interpreted as imposing on operator any obligation to install turbines or other improvements on the owner's property, or to operate the wind farm on the owner's property. Operator should have the sole discretion to determine if and when any turbines and other improvements may be constructed on the owner's property, and if and when to commence the operation of the wind farm. So what that's saying is, you sign up, and we may put a turban on your property.
You get to decide, and I have no say.
Correct.
By entering into this agreement, you agree that you are willing to put a turban on your property.
But that's, that doesn't make it go on. So one thing is, this project may not go forward. They may find there's not a willing buyer for the power, that we find there's conditions that don't go forward. And that's what it's saying, is we're not, by, are you joining into the project? The second is, it doesn't guarantee that one will be installed on your property. If that's a no-go for you, that's fine.
Well, jumping your salesman out to have a piece of paper that I could sign the lease for that quick, and trapping us into the rest of this, I don't think it's a very good business option. It's good for the company itself to lock the land down, but it is not good for the general public, and we're speaking in front of people here that are, that are supposed to help us protect the general public.
Well, what I'd say.
What I'm trying to say is, slow this process down, slow these lease agreements down, get some understanding going on.
So from that, what, so again, looking at kind of the legal framework, and obviously you have a county council that would be learned on this, that's private contract between individuals. County commissions don't generally say, they're, they're not in the business of telling people that they can or cannot enter into private contracts. The state will have all sorts of protections if there's contracts that are illegal for different reasons. This is not one of them. We've been, again, we've been doing this for twenty years on these. I understand there, like, that provision you just read that says there's no guarantee you get a turban. If you don't like that, that's totally understood. But that has to be the way. They could find out on your property, there's environmental concern, or there is a geological condition that doesn't make it possible. They can't have guaranteed that at this stage when we're many, many years out.
Having been wronged by a lot of these types of contracts, these people know the contracts I'm talking about. That going in is one thing, and when you get it in process, it's another. I see a lot of problems within this, and I see a lot of problems. And I'm, I would be glad to leave this one marked up, and you guys can peruse it at your, at your leisure and go from there. But I still say, slow this project down, slow that salesman down. Get an understanding of what you guys are going to be facing. And then we can talk, because, man, I'd like to have fifteen thousand dollars a year sitting there to do that. You're talking with somebody who would, who would gladly go out and try to explain why. You put a contract like that out.
So, Jim, I want to make sure I've missed the contract, so that you're signing these people up, let's say, option lease basically, that's not, that's not, can't really get it.
It's a agreement. Yeah, so there's an option term, are we evaluating this up, or we do analysis? Yes.
So they're getting paid, but boy, you can see, if it comes out they can't use it, then they can't use it.
Correct, and then the term, the entire agreement.
And then if it goes forward, and they decide they want to put a tower on your land, they're going to negotiate a contract for it.
Well, actually, it's one contract. We don't renegotiate, it's one contract, but there's. It's built in, so if we decide, yes, you're going to get a turbine, construction starts, then, you know, there's a new payment structure.
So they're showing, once they sign this, a little three year, and if this works out, then the fifty-year term starts? With no new contract?
No new contract.
It's all built into the same.
And no new contract.
So that, so, yeah, the compensation numbers are in there, the process numbers are in there, all those things are already built into this. So the good thing about that is, they go in with all that knowledge, again, and it's encouraged. In fact, in this case, or any other, it'd be, have a attorney look at it, if there's something, one to either explain, or if there's things they think need to be changed, those options can be discussed. There's things that can't be, and if they, people don't want to enter into, they say to someone, say, no.
This, this contract could walk out a better wind provider someday that would come in with backup powers, something to do with this. So it's another title of the contract that goes all for them and all to the benefit, not really of this project after the general public. And I, and they decide not to do it, it's impossible for me to bring any other contractor in. So they're in control.
You know, similar like oil and gas, we do oil and gas too. If you go and do an oil and gas lease, you don't also have another oil and gas provider decide they're going to drill on the one you leased. You know, it's, everything is subject to, to all the, all the investigation to see if this is viable project, including in this case, does someone want to buy the power? So it does, yeah, it does lock the landowner into that period of time to understand this, do we have a project? That, that is the freedom of contract.
What does it count as an area you're looking at?
So for operational projects, we have about three hundred and fifty wind megawatts in Kingman County and Iskut Craft. As far as early stage projects, we're looking at, you know, solar in Potawatomi County. We're looking at, I don't know how many counties I should name, but.
Yeah, so they, so they.
In the valley of Irish.
Yeah, they have nine projects operating in the state. They have, they did the very first one out in Gray County, the Ensign Project, that's been twenty years. So in twenty years, it goes through that. They've done it in Ford County, they've done, you know, throughout the state. Recently, one in Nemahawk County, and one in Marshall County that's in construction, the most recent. So they, that's a lot, I can train them with a megawatt setup too, but it's a lot.
I think Marshall County's a hundred megawatts, under one twenty in construction.
So when Jeff's talking about, when they sign a three-year option, and you've got the option, there's a three-year option.
Yes.
So that gives you six years. At the end of six years, if you decide you're not moving forward with this project, and that's for all the land rights.
Correct.
Do whatever they want to.
Correct, so we'll provide notice that say this project.
So basically, six years is all the land's entitled.
Yes. We could, two years in, decide this project null and void.
So what is the benefit to the county?
Yeah, that's a good question, I don't think I spoke on that. So the main benefit to the county is property taxes. So not only are we making payments to landowners, but we're also going to pay an increase in their property taxes. So the improvements, or the millions of dollars capital investment on, whether it's solar panels or wind turbines, provides that increase in property taxes, which we pay any increase to the county.
Personal property tax?
I have to pay a little.
So there's, yeah, there's, there would be a real property change usually. So it would go from, so in the case of the wind site, it goes from usually in agriculture to commercial for the acre that's used outside. If there's something there, then personal property tax, the regime for the project now, they're like, like about a million other things, including other energy project, there's ten-year property tax exemption, personal property tax exemption, then it's fully taxed after, from eleven year on. Generally, in most counties, in all the wind projects so far, there's also been a voluntary donation during that first ten-year period. So when you add up those three things, it adds up to a significant amount.
The taxing issue, I even track down through the landowner, and having had a developer do things wrong, and I had to end up spending a tremendous amount of time at the legislature's office to get straightened out, I'm seeing the same things happen here. And I'm seeing problems with how we're going to get, get taxed with these people going in agricultural property that we may get, try to, try to be charged for. So this, again, brings in problems that most people will not be aware of.
So good thing is that it's baked into the agreement, and what has happened in the other nine projects, and in the other forty-plus, counties do it a little differently. Some will just work directly with NextEer and say, we'll just send you those increases, and they make the payment. In the other cases, some counties don't want to do that, they send the landowner, and they, they make the payment or reimburse them. So it's, we have twenty years of history on doing that.
I don't know, let's do the legislature's office.
I don't know if you do that.
But what is the personal property? Is it actually on the windmill? What is the personal property that you're being taxed?
Yeah, the, the, all the infrastructure that's on.
The improvements.
So, yeah, the, the windmill, they, you know, let the lines, the different things that kind of go with that.
Roads that are, that are built on the property can actually be, was, was tried to be taxed in my case. Since it's not really designed for other houses, it would be under a different article.
So any road improvements would be included in improvements that we pay for. Also, we'll compensate if, when the, if there's an increase in changing from agricultural to commercial.
So that can, that can sometimes be the, so if you take an eighty acre, and acres used up for the wind project, that would include the turbine site and the road, then that would sometimes convert, I think, generally, almost always, convert over from agriculture to commercial, there's an increase there, and that's what they pay for.
What if you say about the first ten-year exemption?
So the, wait, if you go through, there's a specific section of property tax for the state in the list, all sorts of things that are tax exempt. Farm machinery, exactly, for example, it's a lifetime exemption, there's no property tax on that. Other manufacturing, I think, is also lifetime. Energy production, whether it be gas, coal, and wind, solar, whatever it is, is ten years. So there's no personal property tax on the first ten years of energy projects. Nuclear, Gat, not to guess any of those. And so then, on years eleven through twenty or thirty, whatever the project lifespan is, then it's taxed. At that point, fully taxed on books.
And I don't know if I mentioned, but the customer to this project is going to be a utility such as Evergy. NextEer is making the investment to develop, construct, build, own, and operate the project for the entire contract. And then we will set up a PPA purchase agreement, hard purchase agreement with a company such as Evergy. They're going to add this project to their portfolio to increase their renewable percentage, and they'll buy the electricity at a set price.
And when does that take your one note again? This is not.
On the property tax, it goes into play when it goes into operation. So commercial operation, that day it starts.
I could go into a long list of road projects, and everything else is going to be a problem with these fancy soils and frost eaten and frost law for weight carrying and everything else. But we can do that at a different meetings and do that with the rest of them. Because that's something that I'm also responsible for for the roads. So there's many different acres, and many different things we're doing in here, including how we, how does the fire department respond to these towers? And what capabilities do we have to have, what capabilities we need to have.
So they're training.
Lots of things that need to be agreed to and known before this goes, before the, before the island sign the land. We've got to have these other things now.
So on, on the roads that we, you know, presume you'll have a third-party engineer, they work with their engineers to go through all that process to know in advance of, of the project going forward, what roads would have to be improved, what bridges, what culverts, all those, with a third-party engineer, and then the cost of those improvements, and then, then putting it back in shape at the end of the project goes on to the developer. So, again, we've done it forty-plus times.
So which one? I mean, with their investment, yes, but I, I get the three-years options in the second one too, so. And it's almost like saying, you bought a piece of land, it's not worth as much as it is in four years, so. I mean, in this case, they have to have that one go, so they can.
I, I realize on part of the entry window, but there is at a certain point where if you go back into that, go back into there, where you can talk about decal, or that they're going into bankruptcy, or they're going into some other receivership type deal. The land is still drawn up and still held with inlet. There are some things that we essentially never get it back once it's passed.
But that's not anything you can't question.
Right.
That's an agreement with you guys and the landowner.
But this is something that the general public needs to know, instead of being given from.
It's pretty explicit. And one thing about the agreement is, it's not hit, it's in, it's, 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 these agreements really are thoughtfully put together, and like in the case of that, what happens is, you have a project that's in operation, the utility's counting on the power. There's usually, they'll finance it, so there's, you know, the bank behind it finances it. It has not happened, but again, worst-case scenario, for some reason, NextEer goes away, and they need both the utility, and the banks need to know, we can continue to operate the project under the terms of that, you know, the time period. So it doesn't, it doesn't extend it forever. It says it won't terminate if for some reason, NextEer goes away, that they can step in the shoes and keep it operating. That makes sense.
So the easement stays with the property, so you would sell your property with the easement?
Right.
They would be, and a new landowner would be entered.
And they get the benefits of the new, of the contracts, so that money and the revenue, and all that kind of goes with the, the positive side of that. Yeah, what you'll find is that people who have entered into the agreement, that land is now more valuable, because there's a pecuniary benefit that, that is hopeful. Or to the point of, obviously, when it goes into operation, it's worth the run.
The only reason I can see a landowner, don't take this all the time, but if you're getting three or six years of option, and all of a sudden they decide to do this, the only reason I would see blowing by a problem with the contract is if they wanted that. Now, 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 it's rare to get. And I think if I was them, I'd want to be protected too.
Yeah, we can't do that, that just, it is one.
You got to know those terms upfront, so.
And just.
But you gotta leave the rest of the contract, and that's why.
These agreements are made between individuals. They have alternatives that can go out of those looking at higher. The county's not working on this contract. Probably a lot of those counties just outside of.
But these, these contracts, like I was saying, when I hold some other contracts that I've been in, that I've taken so well, that went some double meetings, that when you approve them doing business, you essentially approved that contract that they're submitting.
I don't think so, yeah, I don't. I think that a contract's still broken between.
Yeah, there's, there's another set of lines that.
The contract's breaking down, but I'm on the land, but there's not, that's not, nothing.
Right.
One thing to point out with the financials of the project, as you mentioned. So we, we open, we share the agreement, we want to share all the terms, you know, our starting offer, we enter negotiations into each landowner, which is confidential, the financial compensation. One reason that we can't renegotiate at, when we determine, all right, we're going to go to construction, is because we've already locked in a price to our, when we go to construction, it's because we have an Evergy, or we have a customer that's locked in this price for the budget. So that would be really risky if we lock into a PPA, and then say, actually, we have to go check in with every landowner and figure out whether they're still in, what their price is. That's kind of why everything's set up upfront.
Yeah, they'll be locked into their utility, and if all of a sudden they have to, if there's things that could fall apart, the project doesn't happen, that's a big problem.
Because if they, if you guys enter a sales project, it's somebody, that's one. But that's when we will start building, and we have that.
Right, we won't start building until we have that agreement.
Well, the first couple of years where they're going to landowners, making sure that the top ground over.
Yeah.
All the areas are going to fit the project, but it's not going, then they have to confirm it with the county.
Correct.
Right, but that's, I mean, that's all within a period of time. So what kind of questions would you have?
Question I have, one of them, because this is building lots of roads. But if you get, decide to indeed build this project, will it move forward at that point, or do you wait until it is sold to a company that's going, that's power been produced for?
So we will not start construction until we have a power purchase agreement, and someone has committed to buy the power for this project.
That, that's the way that was down there. It's said for what, two or three years?
Two, three years, yeah.
Waiting for a buyer to pull the project.
And not just waiting on a buyer, but doing our analysis and having engineer surveys in parallel of our, you know, our salespeople trying to get a contract with the power as well. So everything will come to.
How big is that in comparison to what we're talking here?
Which one is that?
How big is the one?
I think it's two.
Well, we've got, we've got nine towers in those.
I understand about what it's.
Six, six, seven towers.
Oh, it might be smaller.
Sixty-seven.
Might be a hundred, yeah, it might be a little smaller than.
It depends on the rating, yeah.
Depends on the tower size, because the bigger one, I'm talking.
Right, yeah, the thing is, so the. Right. Yeah, the thing is, so you raised a great point, that's why it's very early in the project. So it's, we're not a couple of years off, we're many years off at this point. Because there's all the geotechnical, environmental, they have to, and I think they have to put an application with the people who manage the grid. And what they do is they go through every part of it and say, here's, you know, either this will work, it won't work, or here's what we have to do to improve the grid in order to make it work. That takes years and years. So I mean, that's taking years for them to get back to them. So we are many stages away before you get to the part where then you're going to the EverGs of the world and say, hey, are you interested in the power?
And you guys have time as well to refine your regulations to outline what you're going to require.
So any landowner, you know, signing an agreement today is not, they don't have anything but their land to be here for right now.
They can continue.
Until you guys decide to put something up, if you do. And they're getting, they had an option, they speed basically.
Correct. And once we start construction, sorry, cut you off. One, once we start construction, one thing in the agreement is crop compensation. So if we start construction at a certain point in the year where we're having to take your damage crops, we'll compensate for that.
It's usually the best, that'll be the best acreage for crop yield. Because it gets paid, that's what it only gets what's worked out.
There's a lot of details in the contract such as that, that cover, you know, based on all the experience we've had. We want to cover ourselves and the landowners from any, you know.
Yeah, there is, NextEer's done nine different projects because the first eight went well. You know, because you go, we go into new communities, new counties, and that previous reputation matters and how those projects went matters.
Well, that's something I want to ask is, generally, that's how we get all the counties with how these topics on the grid.
Yeah, we can connect.
I would be that person too.
I'm for the wind farm, I'm for getting money, I'm for getting all the rest of the stuff. But I'm not for getting trapped into these twisted agreements.
I get that because we got, we had this conversation with roads and stuff.
After, another time.
I was talking about the laws or whatever, but this I don't think is the same, you know, can talk about.
When you read, when you read those twenty-some odd papers, I think you will understand why you red flags me and why you should red flag others.
If I was doing anything, if I was even considering different, I don't know what I'm going to want. But now that everybody has heard of wanting, maybe they'll go, well, I'm not. But I would definitely have an attorney look at it, make sure it was in front of there.
Yeah.
But you're going to get, based on what I'm hearing, is the only thing that's getting signed has an option. If the negotiation is starting now, then you're going to want somebody to help you negotiate the contract anyway. Which is why you'll talk to some people that have these articles.
The, the problem that I had was, is the man that did that says, well, it'll be a couple of weeks before that we start out on this. And then when I come up and get the deal on, pardon me, agenda, I met with him on Friday and he shows up on Monday. So these, they have jumped the gun on doing some other things within the county.
But there's no decision yet made, but all they're, all they're doing is basically tell us what they're wanting to do.
Right.
They're not asking us for anything.
Honestly, the timing of starting to knock on doors and coming to you guys was just logistics and scheduling. I talked to Commissioner Kuter months ago, I think, just introducing myself. And, you know, we, we wanted to come out here as soon as possible, so just the timing between.
Yeah, we try to, I mean, again, so that you're not surprised by something because people come and ask you questions. So open up that line and dialogue that allows you. So if you get a question from one of your constituents that says, I heard, you know, many of the things today.
Right.
What do you know about that? We can provide information or, you know, what have you. Or you're saying, I, you know, I'd like to talk to attorneys that have looked at it for landowners in one of these projects. We, there are people that have done that.
And especially as, as the developer, I am not an expert in every area. We have teams of civil engineers, environmental specialists, attorneys. So I want to help direct, you know, the commission and landowners to the experts.
The difference is not outlined is what the office and inside when we talk to commissioners and people.
Absolutely.
Those are different ones, because I, I, I haven't said it to you guys, but if we don't have these areas, then we can pay the open money.
Well, we do have those in regs.
Right.
I mean, you know, especially with the declining process and just like the other data, it's not something that happens overnight.
Correct.
It's several months.
And when I say that, I guess I should fair to say is what, because the question was asked, it's how do you do the taxation loans? Do you tax above the ground, do you tax on selling the ground, how do you? Now, somebody's got to have, that's my point, somebody's done a research or not, they've been investigation. Because I know we've had that conversation before, I've heard them talk about it, it's how do you tax on selling the ground? So nobody knows how that's all set up, so that's something we're looking at. If there are, there's eight different counties you guys involved in, there were eight different places where there was one.
Sure.
Sure, I'm sure that the state's got, there are regulations on how the taxation goes and everything.
The higher program, you're going to be a trap, you're going to be removed through all kinds of things. Because it's almost a voluntary program with them, whether they pay it or not, whether they file it.
It is, it's a donation. I mean, just what it is, it's, just like, you know, I don't know too many people that probably have a lifetime exemption on farm equipment that come and make, you know, the voluntary donation based on that. This is, just from a technical standpoint, is, is completely voluntary donation, just as if someone was going to, you know, make a donation for the library or some things like that. It's just, the industry's been pretty, pretty consistent.
So you decided to lock out of voluntary, giving the money there, just what we can do to go out there, which is part of the problem.
That's a challenge to a partner.
Yeah, for the ten years. And so it's, I think every wind project has done a donation like that, so we have twenty-year history on that. It is, it's a donation and so it's been pretty consistent.
I can tell you that's before the county, but we have a county council. And we're going to tell you guys about.
Yes, we're, you at least do more of the dirt traps than there to look for. And that's basically all that I can discuss for today.
Okay. It's, it's, you know, been forty-plus of those done in state, so there's good history and obviously.
So do you have a story?
Yes, I agree.
Go ahead, Sean.
Since my field is electronics, while my, my career, I like to know and see your track records on computers ability why I do it and what you've had.
I'm feeling, let's share contact.
Yeah, these are some of the best engineered, that's, two big ones are GE and Siemens that have done, you know, so they're, they're pretty heavily well-engineered.
The latest name is the biggest sign.
Yep.
So I'm sorry about that, and, you know, it's quite true.
That may be, but what they're experiencing over here already right now is what I'm concerned about, what I experienced with that. So let's, let's, that's on that. I don't want to see that in my opinion.
What is the actual risk to the landlord?
The.
Have them always know.
To the landowners, I guess, they don't, it doesn't go forward, they don't, they don't get the benefit of the future.
So there's no, there's no increase in insurance because it's got to be.
Fully insured.
Always book, aren't killed somebody in the years.
Fully insured.
The property tax didn't go away, you guys. So I'm trying to figure out, what is the risk, why would it, why would a commissioner decide to say, no, we don't think you should do that? That's my question. I don't see where it's a real issue, other than your land's going to be tied up, but you're getting profit from it.
Right. It's guaranteed income for the next fifty years.
Yeah, they, they're, yeah, the risk is, I guess, you know, it sounds like if you think another company's going to come in and that's the better horse to bet on, then you bet on that horse or none at all. But it's, yeah, you're, you're going to give them six years to see if they can move it forward.
Then they're going to get the fifty after that.
If it goes forward.
But that's, that's an agreement that, I mean.
Same thing for, for a barn for someone, it's, it's just a.
I don't know how you, I mean, I wouldn't, for the wrong money, I'd ask, but I don't want to know what I was going to get. Because you're talking for an asset of a million dollars.
Right.
And all of a sudden you give an option, this is what this is going to be. You know, I, I get where you're getting at, but I just want to make sure from, from a landowner's standpoint, they're giving out whatever section of land, where the turbine's actually sitting.
Right.
Because they can go out and farm the area around it or not.
All the way.
Correct, yeah, up until like five feet. And another thing with leasing the property is, let's say you have a hundred and sixty acres. You have your home, you can, in your contract, say, I want a setback around my home. I don't want the turbine to be farther than, or closer than this feet away. So you don't have to sign up every acre of your property. You can offer half of it to the project. We work with each landowner individually.
And then the last question, what's the risk to the county? As long as we're protected with decommissioning and getting rid of it, it's done. I'm trying to figure out whether the rest will be, does anybody have any questions on that? I'm just.
So what, so the risk would be, and here's how we cover it. So the risk would be, they come in, they tear up the roads and they go away. There'd be a bond in place. So if the worst-case scenario happens and they do that, then you'll go fix them and you have a bond in place to do that. They'll have insurance in place, so let's say something happens and they, a bridge is damaged, it's not contemplated, there's insurance to take care of that. Same thing with decommissioning. So all the things, because over the last twenty years, we're kind of really working on these. It's to make sure, you go to your constituents and say, what's the risk here? And the answer is, they're all covered now. So that's, all those through the agreements and through third-party engineers and then through different kind of security instruments, they're taken care of. So that we can keep the county out of that, so that, because we just know that's important.
We had a road consultant was the last one, it worked very well.
Yep.
We will have one on this one, if it gets that far.
Yep.
It's one of the things the planning commission requires is that a road maintenance agreement is installed in the plan as well as the setbacks and things like that, for houses and all that. I mean, that's just a given condition in the planning process.
Right.
So, thank you.
That's okay.
The tax itself would have started entering about ten years ago, is that right?
On the, on the personal property side.
Except the pops.
Right.
So that would be, that's about four years, that's going to be.
So once we get more, what turbines we're using, how much exactly the capital investment is, then we'll start giving you estimates on how many.
Well, the problem is, I guess if the turbine's still up, we're going to stop running the tax, so that could be a reason.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And they're not, you know, if the turbine's not operating and selling electricity, they're not making money. And so that's, yeah, there's real motivation option to make sure for if they're functioning, you know, and selling it as efficiently as possible.
I learned more about wind turbines and just as well, you guys.
Can you, uh, roll around?
So, once you're interested in the water, I mean, we're talking about the ground. If you can't put a turbine in the ground, you can sure put a, a turbine.
So right now, that's going to be really up to the landowners and seeing who's interested in each technology and that will shape it.
That's a completely different animal.
We don't know.
You can't farm on a solid panel.
Right, yeah, there's, yeah, different uses, different payments.
I guess they grow sheep under some, depending on where they're at.
Yeah, there's sort of a different issue. And then ultimately, what does the utility want, what we're talking about at some point, they, because there's different benefits to the utility. The wind is, both of them are the cheapest thing, that's why the utilities want that, it's cheapest power. But they come, they hit their kind of peak points at different times of day, so there's a time of day for the utility. So they're, they're kind of doing different things to maximize things for the rates and different things like that.
Well, if there's any other questions, my card is in the packet, feel free to reach them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, we're just, we're one side, we're the other.
Yeah, right.
If you guys say, I wasn't smart enough to get on the agenda. I know that you, all never know what you're going to get into, so. I work with KBS Constructors, we're a general contractor at Pika. And I'm aware of the coming geo project possibly that you guys are considering and I just wanted to stop by and.
It's a ways off.
Just, I understand, that's good, that means I'm right on time. What's that again? Yeah, I spoke with Sheriff Weller, Williams. Anyway, we have experience with these types of facilities. I don't know, familiar with KBS, I've been in business for thirty years, I speak at that kind of thing. So I was just kind of scouting out the project.
Okay. Good. We're good.
One of the questions, good, was the funding mechanism you guys are using for this? Has that been determined? No. Proposed. I think we're out of those numbers, so you're there. So it's the steps that are. Take up too much on time. Anyway, so any information that you might need from us and how it's all going to play out. We're obviously interested in how it's, they call it the delivery method, whether it be hard or easy. Which is why I asked, because that's the funding system.
Okay.
Construction manager, so. Anyway, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to sit in on this, if that's okay.
Sure.
Come on up, Mr. Wells, or Sheriff Wells. Just for reading.
Homework, homework.
Like, oh, you want to have a copy of this stuff I did?
Yes, I have a copy that shows me that.
Okay.
I have a copy of the contract.
Which one?
The four years.
All right, I've given you quite a bit of information.
That's it.
I wonder what part you want to get first. If we can get some votes on a couple of the stuff, it would be strange to move forward. One specifically is the, uh, it's the email from Gopher.
Which one?
It's the email from Larry Gopher. This discusses the fees associated with using Greg, I can't pronounce his last name, from Raven James.
I can't hear you guys, I mean, I'm not hearing a buck or a dollar here.
So this discusses the fees associated with using the. So this discusses the fees associated with using the Gregory Van Burgenberg from Raymond James. Also is provided with a contract with them. But speaking with Larry Goldberg, he has said that the fees are, we only pay them if it gets voted in.
So this is basically where you help set this up for the election and then.
Yes, to start moving forward to the actual election.
Then they collect the fee if it's an awkward, they collect that.
Right.
And still a revenue bond, Chris.
It is revenue bond, yeah.
And the reasoning we get on whoever ballots by the charter resolution.
Yes, which is another thing to warn them. Which is this document.
So that's the contract that, did you see that? Yes. Yes.
This makes this a binding election. So it makes it where you would create a P, what is it, Public Building Commission?
Yeah.
And they would make the resolution to put this on the ballot for November second. And it would be a binding election. So it wouldn't be a special election, it would actually be a binding election.
So that's an up and down, what they're going to go forward.
Absolutely.
So it's similar to a general obligation law, but it's going to be based on our.
Yes. That way, we're not spending money on a special election that doesn't mean anything really. This would actually have teeth to it.
The other one is just basically, just to prove yourself.
Yes. Is it not due? Right. And I would like to point out that this is for the revenue generated jail. So this is not a tax increase, this is for the revenue proposal.
Right.
Just want to get that clarified.
But it'll be backed by, it'll act, I mean, that's the guarantee part of it.
Right.
It's backed by general obligation law, so it's where it should.
It's a revenue base, yes. So there will be no increase in taxes in this, is what I'm saying. We're not saying we're going to increase taxes this.
Well, can we guarantee that? I don't think. It doesn't need guarantees.
If it doesn't come, then you have to raise taxes.
Correct.
Just take your space in there.
What I'm trying to tell you, what I'm trying to say is, instead of raising taxes to build a jail, we're not doing that. We're doing the, the revenue generated jail. That way, we're not guaranteeing we're not raising the taxes, does that make sense?
We're doing the same thing we did before.
Yes.
I mean, there is no guarantee tax increase.
There's no guarantees.
The idea is that we're doing nothing, that at least has the, have we believe, and I believe also, other than the information's been provided, that this will pay for itself and that's all.
Yes.
Versus if we go along strictly to the obligation law, taxes are definitely.
Right, that's what I was trying to say.
Ultimately, not to raise taxes.
Right.
Not meaning that they not go up.
Not, no guarantees, obviously. Everyone may look and cry. Right.
I would.
All right.
I just want to make sure we're, I don't want to say, you said, we're going to raise taxes, I'll say taxes.
Gotcha.
And when do we need to have all this?
The sooner the better, obviously.
Well, they included one thing that looks like they want to pass today.
Yes, that was the, the, what's it called?
Do you have copies of that?
Kansas Public Building Commission?
Are you talking charter resolution? It says, the timeline says, September seventeenth, that would be today, we got the pass.
That's the publication of it.
I'm trying to figure out which one you're talking about.
She's, she's been in contact with them.
Yes.
Adopted, so they could adopt it on the seventh, because it doesn't start publishing until the seventeenth.
Yeah. So this is, this, it just hasn't been correct about the date.
He made it sound like they did it.
This is for example, so that they can look at it, and I believe we're going to come back on the seventh.
Okay.
So is this the one we're talking about?
It's charter resolution.
That's compassion, so this is why I was trying to make a look at.
Yeah, but I want to give us all in front of us, take a look at it, so that we can.
I just want to make sure that. You have the charter resolution, it'd be adopted by next week, next Tuesday.
Right. This is getting this too.
The charter, yeah.
I think you asked this, but your answer, is there something today needs?
Not, not today.
This, this one is the one that we need to be.
That's one we're going to.
So are we moving in with this to.
Don't you think we have children, we have to.
They didn't have to.
Which one is it?
I'm trying to get Larry to come up.
Yes, and one question I had, I know the bond council and the bond company prepared all this stuff. Is this method been done in another county?
Said thousands of times.
This charter resolution method is supposed to go straight down the statues.
Yeah, and I can try to get Greg to come, I'm sure. I'll ask.
That'd be helpful too, yeah. Well, the charter resolution kind of changes how we're going about this. Because if we didn't do this charter resolution, we couldn't put it on in November or make it binding. Because a revenue bond doesn't require a vote of the public normally. I mean, that's something the commission could just go ahead and do without approval of the public. I know this commission blocks the approval of the public to proceed on something like this. So it kind of accommodates that and allows it to get on the November ballot.
Ian makes it binding.
Yes. Yes. Is this a proof of laws or is it?
So this is just another legal one?
Yes, yes. It's basically the same number where it's, the commission would not.
Right. This just, this basically allows us to get on the. Yes, well, it puts us on the November ballot versus the special election that we have to pay for this.
It could go on the November ballot as a boundary.
Right. Yep.
And maybe the binding makes more sense as well.
I agree.
It's not, anybody else is going to make this decision, all you guys have to do is vote, but it's all public votes.
But it, basically, you're voting to let the public vote, isn't it? What we're doing, which is like the best solution. Say no or yes, right.
I think the board of directors, that would support it, so that's a problem. But this way, it does not cost the taxpayers any money for an extra.
Special election.
For an election that costs them twenty grand.
Well, probably about five or six thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we're saving about a lot of money.
If I do it this way.
That's how I want, but they have a lot of dollars. Right.
Yes, I mean, better than spending it for nothing, literally nothing. But, yep, I just want to provide all the information and then I'll go and schedule the next.
Next one. Did you, did you realize this?
I did not. So you get, so you get lots of extra free time to read? Is that what you're saying?
It's got more time to spend there. We love it.
Yeah, yeah. That's all I got, is all that. So I will get on the schedule.
Thank you. Yeah, I probably want to go attorney client, exactly. Myself and just being who my attorney is. I just go in there and shut the door, probably. You gotta do it on the phone. Yeah. I would bring the motion that we go on the executive session until eleven forty, attorney client privilege. And at that time, we'll be calling Woodpat, also President of County Counselor, and we'll be making a phone call to Joshua Nye from our county's in now law group. To be part of our executive session. Prepare them for our bus out. Attorney client privilege. Attorney client privilege. All of us up there, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of you say aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Are you saying?
We're standing.
Sorry, Jean, we're saying.